I don't know what to do with it. What says Hutchinson, raise hand.
Okay, number three, presentation of the positions and other communications. A human service grant appeal hearing for Boone homeless fund. Okay, you're welcome. Come forward.
I would like to request this be postponed. We actually do it in the chambers, so can we record it?
I'm sorry.
He's been showing it up.
Are you recording this? It's being recorded on Zoom.
Okay. Well, then I want to know why my grant was denied.
You want to see it?
It was off the Your Honor committee.
Yeah, it's on the committee. I believe that he received a phone call and a letter which had the reasons for why it was denied. It was the absence of a board and the absence of an independent audit.
Okay, he didn't ask you for audits. You have to physically request me to submit an audit through your front page. It said audit by request on it. And as far as a board goes, I'm at a state federal level. And I really don't need a board in the state of Iowa. I am running legally.
And that's, we actually don't have any qualms about your organization in particular. I think we're, we think we're doing a great job. Just that with the taxpayer money going to an organization, we have to be sure that it's, that there's some transparency and things like that. And it actually goes to the bylaws of the committee as well.
Okay, well, if you look at the front page of your documentation, I have all of your guidelines. I mean, every single guideline on there was met. There was no reason for you to deny the request that I submitted. There was none, zero.
So I think I already reiterated the reason that we discussed in committee moving out of this decision.
And then you also put on this book that you said I was not in a legitimate agency, a legit human service agency.
That was also in the letter that you submitted, that we submitted to you, that your organization was not, the committee felt that it didn't rise to the level of a human services agency.
Okay, so when did we start doing things on our feelings? Tell me, I mean, I can do a lot of things with feelings. Feelings don't cut it when we're going by a guideline of everything that I have to submit to qualify for your grant. Feelings are not on me.
If I could interject, this is an appeal of a determination by your committee. And unless you act illegally or fraudulently, preciously, or unreasonably, there is no basis to set it aside. If you look at the guidelines and determine that some agencies would receive funds and some would not, then that's a proper exercise in your authority. If you use the guidelines, which you, you feel, that is clearly an exercise. So I think we can quibble about what you think they should have decided or what they might have done.
I bet.
Don't interrupt me, please. You can quibble about maybe they should have decided something differently, but that's not the basis of the appeal. They have the discretion to decide who receives funds and who doesn't. And you have to point out, you have to prove some illegality, some arbitrary action. And unless the council sees that, then we just set it aside. So legally, that's, that's what I think you folks are having to see.
So do you think it was okay for you guys to set aside extra money for Salvation Army when they didn't even apply for the grant? I didn't get anything, but they didn't even apply for a grant. And you guys set aside extra money to give to Salvation Army. How does that work?
We don't even know if those funds are going to exist. We're probably going to have to cut.
But you've already set them aside for Salvation Army?
Not for Salvation Army.
I thought it said in your last, your last document that you did.
They would be involved with the administration of any excess funds for a county organization, but this, it's not specifically pointed at all.
I think it says specifically Salvation Army in there. And then you also said I'm a duplicate agency? I'm not a duplicate agency. You tell me what other agency in Boone County that pays the first month's rent for homeless people?
So I think there was a suggestion in the letter that you work with other agencies to achieve some ends.
I work with ERP and Salvation Army. I am the only organization in Boone that the homeless people can go to to have their first month's rent paid. So that was not a duplicate agency. Unless you can tell me what agency does.
I'm just, I'm just referring to the information that we were.
And every one of them guidelines I did follow. And I met every one of them.
Just because you followed the guidelines doesn't mean you won't be granted funds. Board always has the discretion to decide what the appropriate expenditure, expenditure of those funds is.
Well, the reason for them denying my grant is on my qualifications. And my qualifications aren't there. So if I met every one of them qualifications, my grant should not have been ever been there. By meeting every one of them qualifications.
What I'm telling you is that doesn't guarantee you an award of money. Just because you meet all of the guidelines, the committee still asked enough to look at the various agencies that apply based on the limited funds they have to make a decision based on their guidelines as to how to grant those.
But I met every one of their guidelines. And that's why I didn't deny the grant.
Well, they don't have to grant you funds.
Well, then he should fund it on something else, shouldn't he? Not the guidelines, because I met every one of them.
Well, I think they looked at all the, he talked about other things other than those guidelines.
And I met every one of them.
Criteria.
I agreed those state federal level. And I did get a federal grant, so for you guys to say I'm not a legit agency, I got a $3,000 federal grant. I would have to be a legit human service agency for me to even qualify for any grant money at a federal level, not a state.
I ask you, I have the recognition most for a board and the audit.
The audit is the simplest case that is upon request only. They never requested the audit for me.
But what about the board?
The board, I do have an umbrella too with the Boone outs. I don't even need a board. But nobody asked me if I had an umbrella or not either. I mean, you guys just asked me if I had a board. I don't have a board, but if I don't need a board. So what my umbrella does, if anybody wants to know, I have to report once a month to the Boone House. And I have to actually give a statement to their board on what I've done. That's an umbrella for a non-credit.
Well, I think this is a city attorney brought up. Committee has that problem with decisions. I don't know exactly, this is the first time I've ever had a human service appeal. I don't know how this has worked in prior 17 years of me being here. I don't feel comfortable making decisions, the council will say they have to do it. The only thing I could ever see us doing is where man in effect, many can look at. I don't, I don't feel comfortable. Council may be, you know, that's funding they have. And if they were to do it, it may alter numbers for other people. I don't have enough information, even thinking. I wouldn't feel comfortable in any of that.
Committee willing to look at it again?
Our chairperson is here.
We were the other one. We, I didn't want to say, um, just scared, Mr. Robbins to be at that meeting. The board, to let me compress every issue. And so that the city then understands the recommendations that we made to pass.
No pair of you, we send it back to the committee to have them look at it again?
Yes.
Shouldn't it? I'll make a motion to send that around to committee for review. Hold on. Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kiphan?
Yes.
Sucker, yes, Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Okay, and being Senator Polittarian for July 6, 2020 at 6:00 PM, in consideration of voluntary annexation of 127th Street, Boone, Iowa. Motion approved. Second, hold on.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kiphan?
Yes.
Sucker, yes, Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Okay, number four, reported standing committees, policy administration, DJ?
Number four.
Public safety, Stevens. Just briefly to let the council know, communications board met last Thursday night. Based on the prior vote that you managed to fair at that time, I voted to approve and panel this vote for a 3.3% increase in the budget, which is under the 4%. That only includes enough funding for the benefits for eight full-time communications dispatchers in there. Ideally, nine is the better number for a myriad of reasons, scheduling, kind of stuff. We just don't have that kind of money available right now to fund that. It would have been an additional $86,000, which was about $29 in our share. So after that decision was made, we decided to, well, Dan Glashaw, our county attorney, and our city attorney, Jim Robbins, spoke with us and they agreed to work together, a couple members of the committee, who will try and determine the future of this 2018, the work we end with the county and often it matters. That's something that we want to continue to do. Or are there other options, transferring that power to, as an example, the emergency management commission? And then looking at other alternate sources of funding that doesn't always rely on that portion coming from the political sector. So maybe we'll work on that in weeks and months to come. We have some time now, we've got to figure out that point for now. Maybe we'll get some progress toward that point. Do you have any questions? Nothing to know, but otherwise, that's. Next, the committee, Stevens. Okay, the committee met last week and we did decide to bring to the council that we would like to continue water meter replacements. That's kind of stalled with COVID and all that stuff. You think with proper notification and BP won by our city staff, we can begin that again. Made recommendation to have them go back on schedule July, July 1. All right, so I would make that motion. Go ahead.
Second, overall.
Kiphan?
Yes.
Sucker, yes, Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, and then finally, we've been talking the last few months and seeing some of the fruits of the labor we've done on the some inspection schedule. Number two is coming up now this year. Dan, you want to just speak briefly to where you're going to go on what kind of timeline is for public knowledge?
Yeah, sure. So we are ready to start our target area number two, which would basically be the northeast area. From the northeast quadrant, it's a little bit larger area. Previously, we've done one that's about 10 by 10 blocks in size. This one's a little bit larger, that's not the only homes. We would like to start the some pump inspection program in that area in August. Again, with the face masks and the type of personal equipment. So, um, we would like to have a neighborhood meeting in this auditorium in August and then start the inspections later on. So that's kind of, that's what we're doing. So we'll present that tonight as a possible option. You all agree, and that's important.
Very thoughtful, you know, you feel obviously this is something forward. We're seeing a huge production in the lower. In fact, our meeting the other night that John, John Lee.
Yes.
He's the one, if you don't remember, that could tell that got 1.9 cents, seven inches of rain. But he showed up the other night just to let us know that it seems to be working. So that's a good move for everyone else in the city of that problem. So I would make a motion that we go ahead and approve the tentative target area number two inspection schedule. Overall.
Sucker, yes, Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kiphan?
Yes.
Okay, the economic development committee, and I'll turn this over to Greg in a second to break news on the overpass project. That project has been moved out in 2021, or 2023, or wherever it's going to be. But I want to thank everybody who's worked very hard on this project. I mean, from, want the folks who traveled to Okoboji to present our case. We've traveled to Des Moines, to different places. This has been one that's just, I've worked on for years on a different location. So I mean, this thing's been ongoing. And I just want to thank everybody because it's finally going to happen. So open down the gates to trade issues. I want to add safety issues to the committee. So I'm going to turn over Greg for details. And I'll turn it over to Bill. We'll put it back to Bill. Well, it's my understanding that they're going to let the project in January of '21. Dan, what I'm talking, year and a half of construction?
Yes.
So, but the good thing is, like the mayor said, that it's been approved two years earlier. This is not only the mayor's set of safety, certainly the city, but it's also a huge economic development for the city. So in the process, Dan and working with the county applied for a clean air grant, correct?
Correct.
And we've been notified that when we see $800,000 on that grant, that's a 60-40 split, 60%, the county will receive 60% of that, city will receive 40%, which is about $320,000. We, as you, if you remember, the 2018 year with the county was a 60-40 split on the $1.5 million for the extension of 2nd and 3rd Street. It starts out here at the courts and Despera Road. It goes east to meet up with the overpass project that the state's doing. The state's going to do the work on that with the city, county, or any of that. Our share is $600,000. If you also remember when that came was taken place, Fairway committed to the city $100,000 toward this project. So we have already received 320,000, 420,000 of that $600,000, which is really, really good news. And I'll just talk briefly about the appropriations that are out in Washington, DC. If you remember, this council voted to give the DOT authorization to try to, I mean, I did that. Appropriation was around $600,000, if I remember. I have not heard what resulted of that yet. There's also appropriations out there in the amount of $999,000 and some odd dollars. At some point, I think that'll come back to council for approval, for DOT to try to retain that money as well for this project. And then I anticipate that if that happens and they're successful, that will further reduce the amount that the city actually has coming out of this box. That money that's appropriated in DC. That's not definite, this is something that may happen. Hope that helps, take any questions you may have. I do want to thank Fairway, because Fairway, of course, it benefits Fairway as well. But they've been huge in helping with the support on this project. And all of a sudden, we carried this thing, studied the industry elements, we carried this project. We pushed it all the way through, and Fairway played a huge part in getting this thing done as well. I want to thank them, so. But that's all, Chris. Do you have certain questions? Sorry, it's a.
No, it, uh, Bill mentioned our industrial park road contribution. The overpass itself is over $14 million. So that's $14 million that the city does not have to fund in some way, shape, or form to make this happen. It's still provide access, except we're all, for studies going back to, what was that study, 1992? Yeah, so I've seen studies going back to 1992 for that study. So this is a huge 30-year-plus achievement that we've got. That's all.
Number five, department boards, rolling this with heads up here. So Dan, you making that?
Yes, Dan, thank you, Your Honor.
So tonight, we have a site plan for Farley Wholesale Tire Equipment Loop at 1810 South Story Street. The staff report is in your package, so if there are any questions, I'll take those. Staff is recommending approval.
The motion. Hold on.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kiphan?
Yes.
Sucker? Yes.
Next up, finance officer, Brad.
Uh, yeah. The 2020 hotel motel concept cut in and we are about 48, $6,337 short from our budgeted, just paid revenues. In order to fund all the hotel motel allocations, except for the boulders in, the payment which we already have building on nap to do, we would need to use $48,000 of our hotel motel cash. So I guess I'm looking for direction on whether we want to do that or if we want to do that and re-incorporate.
How much do we have in reserve?
We have $180,000 over our cash reserve policy.
But if I could just throw in that, does that include what we're still paying the theater people? It's out of that $180,000. So we want to make sure that's counted as well. I think we have three more years.
I do not have those three years that I kind of, you know, because that's a.
So that reduces it from that 18 down to 150 that we are obligated to pay. And then I think there was money for catering from the, who was sitting out railroad, I believe, as well.
That was my guess. That was 12 or 5 years.
5,000 for 5 years?
They wanted $25,000.
And we gave, we gave them 5 for 5.
We pledged.
But so, okay, so there is another, I think, $25,000 there that we have to account for of that $180,000 besides the other 30, I think. So can you just keep that in mind as you decide? I think that's all the, what are the obligations? It's not 20, how much, 21?
20, oh, $6,337 is what we were short. We had anticipated introducing $15,000 already to cash. $5,000 was for the Freedom Rock and $10,000 was for the theater. One more question is, we wanted to talk about the.
Sure. This does seem to be a singular event that having an amount above the reserve policy will be designed for.
I will tell you that county reserve society will be getting probably soon. That $1,000 is probably as well. So we're not going to be able to cut anything. It's still outstanding. The county fair, everything that's still on holding patterns of COVID is probably either going to happen or it hasn't right now.
I don't, I don't like telling people that you're still.
So we would be using $26,000 from reserves. $48,000.
And that's in full pay for the full year because we give half of that.
Correct.
So you give this, what you allocated for the first half, what you allocated for the second half. Then we're $48,000, using $48,000 of reserves.
Correct. And that's based on my, my projection of what we're going to need.
Right.
And the way I came up with that is assuming we aren't going to get anything for the first quarter. Because that was April, May, and June. We'll call it September. So I'm assuming we're going to get very little on there and then I reduce the other three quarters by about 25%.
I know progress is still happening, but you kind of have to expect.
Yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we fund in our reserves for the $48,000 for this budget.
Second. Overall.
Burr?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And then also in regards to the hotel motel, I've spoken with Fred Rainer. He's applying the Freedom Rock payment made in full in July versus having it split into two segments.
That was out of reserve anyway.
Yes.
Does we get a motion for that? Make a motion to make a change. All right.
Burr?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
And then local tax, the state has announced that they're not going to make any changes to their estimates. So that, what that means is that for the next six months, I'll be in the same amount that they've estimated for this year. And then in November, they will reconcile and then either they will take away and reduce my next six months payments or we'll get a small increase, is what we usually do. We'll get a second check there of local tax to reconcile what we actually received versus what they changed. So for right now, we're on the understanding that we're going to get what we get this year.
City engineer, do you have any word? Other words?
Engineer, a couple updates. Finished city white paint on time last Friday. Good project. I think we have, I'll work on the numbers and give them for you for next month. As you noticed, the traffic bike or the traffic signal paintings or the street paintings done, we contracted that. At least we could have done it in August. But someone dropped out because of the financial crisis that the community is in. So they fucked us up, which helps us because then it's on the street, we're going to report our products. Now we're back to normal. We're going to support on the fences and the traffic acceptable series, we go to the P A homes.
Okay.
Lemon Street project's gone, traffic control's up, the stuff that we, you know, we had three issues on Lemon Street that we didn't fix. So we're just, we put our good deals. Any questions?
Great to have you on, speaking with you. I know your staff, that was awesome.
We'll loop, we'll loop. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, city engineer, Dan.
Mr. Engineer, step two, I was here tonight.
The first resolution is for the materials testing for Lemon Street is John mentioned. Lemon Street has started, so we are in the midst of that construction project. So we need to do some materials testing. So. It's a budgeted expenditure of $8,400. So that's resolution number one. Anyone has any questions? I'll take questions.
Second, call roll.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Thank you. I remember two is, is an agreement for the waste water treatment facility. So we have a bunker on Thompson Farm. So we have a three-year agreement negotiating with them. It's similar to what's, it does before. It's just a continuation of that. $8,000 a year and that allows us to store the sludge there and then spread it on the land.
Stein?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
And next up, all the states and chief matters?
No report, Your Honor.
Chief Weble.
No report, Your Honor.
City administrator, Bill.
Thank you, sir. Just one quick update. I've had some contact recently with the Rotary and the train project on the south side. We're looking forward to having a Zoom meeting with staff of them coming up here in the next few weeks. Evolve our timeframe for moving the train and the tender passenger car is the week of July 20. The route that they are looking at is going to interfere with our construction on Lemon Street here. So we'll work that out when we have a meeting. Let's move forward.
Are we going to put those trees back?
Yes. I haven't.
Thank you. Okay, number six, consent agenda. Remember, I haven't talked consent agenda that you'd like to discuss, it's so being removed it.
Second.
Call roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Kipha?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, ordinance is A, 432260, ordinance to modify the distance provisions to allow for the keeping and parking of bees in City of Boone. Code section 55.186 and 175.29. Second, overall.
Kipha?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yeah.
Mormon?
Yes.
And number eight, I don't have any comments. The city, number nine, the council comments.
One thing, guys, probably know, so I'd be done a little bit more on the green space, but we trust. Got that secure and we want to run that again hopefully this week sometime, right?
Yeah.
Put the roof on. I also contacted Spring Green to treat that space up there and they are willing to donate that. And take care of that space and then they're going to reseed it. Since it didn't take very well, so they're going to take that over and do that. All we have to do is pay for the seed and lights are going to take care of it. Trade it as a donation. Other than that.
I just take, like, to take a moment to thank Chief Weble and all the officers for the president's last Monday, we walked by the matter event. They helped keep everybody safe. They blocked out roads when they didn't have to. They ended up watering they didn't have to. And I think it just shows the professionalism of our force. So, I think all, all your officers.
I'd also like to just speak to the convenience of those meetings and how I appreciated it when I wasn't comfortable coming in. But I'd like to continue to speak out from the public, if that is accessible for anybody anywhere. A good thing to just continue doing. As I often go back and watch the YouTube videos, the Zoom recordings are just a lot better. Maybe give them 100% better. So. I don't, I don't think that it's a big inconvenience, but it's something I think.
No, but I think we probably need to upgrade some equipment because there's going to be some meetings that I can't attend and that we can do some more automated stuff, but I'll leave that with the city administrator. There'd be some expenditures.
I have a concern over the recent spam hijack that's happening for some public forums. The lockdown obligation of members. If, if we're going to look at this, we need to look at options. For security purposes, as if some of them's in hijacks, we have no control of it. That's so public record. My personal concern right there.
No one, because that happened, it's a little city. Like WebEx, I think that really has the same problems too.
Granted, this has some options. There's been really a whole explosion of public options. Have sat research before we look at it.
Okay, so I'm assuming this costs money, we don't have any budgets for this, but I'm assuming you still want to spend the money.
I right now, I just think that's definitely certain options. Especially with that budget that Chris just saw.
Yeah, this is definitely a, a quick fix. I mean, they have more options, but they all cost more money. So initially, we took the quick and I'm not the cheapest, but the most economical.
For example, can you have a council comments?
I have some, Your Honor. I would like to say to Chief Weble, these guys on Monday night did a wonderful job reaching out, trying to find information, maybe it happened, coordinate what you did. And for an organization whose position is to abolish our police department, I think it was very professional how it happened and how quiet it was.
Other council comments? Any public comments, items I don't need to hear?
Yes.
Your Honor, staff, members of the council, my name's Joe Ponzac, 528 South Story Street. I'm a bit distressed. We're in the process of investing in a property in downtown Boone. And the rumors are abounding that this council will ask to abolish the police. I'm looking for some assurance or direction in one way or the other. It would be kind of ridiculous to invest real estate downtown if in fact that's going to take place. I hear all the wonderful things about Chief and his staff. I wholeheartedly agree. Can't imagine this community without it. My question to the council, Mayor, are you intending to abolish or defund the police department?
As long as I'm standing there, I mean, the police department, we will, we will give up okay. Anyway. I, you know, everybody knows I'm a huge supporter of the police department. Yeah. So I heard some of the same things you've heard. I see the sign up for the group. You had to, no pro law enforcement, no whatever. I totally oppose that. I'm a, I'm a, I'm telling you, I fully support the support. Anybody else on the council? I would support. Stucker?
Well, how many?
I mean, would you support that?
I can't say that I would or not for some, the option. I think that this is, this is ritual sensationalizing something. No idea what you might be implying or not implying.
I'm not implying anything. I'm just saying what has been reported on the street. Merchants downtown are worried that this BLM agenda that you and Councilman Stein's been part of advocate the abolishment of a police department or at the very least defunding it. I'm asking this council, are you going along with that?
Sir? Yes, sir. I, I am not in favor of abolishing. You want to talk mental health funding, more partnerships, lobbying the state like Chief Weble's on the Senate State House, asking the state to help mental health funding? Absolutely. Abolishment of.
No way.
No way?
No way.
I'm, I'm going to say, oh.
Mr. Stein?
We're not going to abolish the Boone Police Department.
Or defund it?
I don't know what the funding means.
Okay. Mr. Mormon?
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
I just, the funding and then that they're not stopped helping the homeowners and the mentally ill and redirecting funds. And if making his job better and more successful, I am for that.
I'm for that too. My wife and I, I tell you this right now, that doesn't come out of taxpayers' moves. That's a state issue that's been ignored for a long time. The state doesn't take that up. I don't see us, I don't have the diamond either to do that type of work. But that, 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 the state has to stand in and do stuff. There's no resources out there. You can deal with it all day long. There's nowhere to take off. State's got to deal with that.
I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying because quite frankly, we're making this, our deal is going down. And I, I can assure you, we'll be standing in front of this group, asking for money in terms of grants and so forth. We're going to do that. I do that anyway as part of the airport commission. So you're used to it from me. But I wanted to hear a public dissent in terms of where your positions were before we make this deal happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, provisional approach.
This goes to, uh, great thoughts. So I'll get back. Thank you. Okay, any public comments, items on agenda?
Yes.
I, I have a question.
Okay, who?
Please state your name.
I, I absolutely will. Oh, I didn't want to interrupt. I'm Linda Blakely. I just have one question. I heard I'm, it's, uh, Holly, Ms. Decker, you're very difficult to hear. I want you all to know that, um, I'm zooming in and the audio is pretty bad in the auditorium. I haven't done one in the council, but it's very difficult to hear, just so you know, in the future. But I would like to ask Mr. Steins, who is my direct representative and my ward, why he is a member of a Facebook group that clearly states they will disband the police and are spewing hate and civil unrest in our community? Now, I support the movement and the mission, but not that Facebook group. I realize he doesn't have to answer, but as we are trying to secure our business, I would like my councilmen to be more, more proactive in helping us be progressive downtown. And I'm frustrated. Mr. Steins?
Well, I would say as a direct result of being in that group, I was able to assure Chief Weebold that everything that I saw in the group was on the up and up and there was no sort of, uh, insinuation that there was going to be anything besides a peaceful demonstration. So, knowledge and power.
So why didn't you share that with me then when I asked you if you were a part of that and what was happening? Why did you not tell me that it would be all right?
Involved. And I don't know what that word means.
Well, if you were told that it was, I expressed a concern to you on your council Facebook page and you gave me a rather blank answer. If you knew that information, how come you didn't share that with, uh, with somebody that is concerned?
You didn't say you were concerned. You said, are you involved? So if you said, I'm concerned that
Did you?
I could say, no, but there's no indication that there will be violence. It's people of color that want
Okay.
See solidarity from the community. That's what they want. And if you were
Okay, so in
the hundreds of people down there, if they want to abolish the police or become the police, they would tell you no.
Next time I will be more direct with my questions since I understand that you're not going to be forthcoming with information unless we ask for it specifically. I would appreciate that we have an amicable relationship and that you represent the ward that I'm in. The pro, the reason I asked that was because we were trying to make a decision on whether to board up the windows or not. We were contacted by the per, the business we're purchasing. We didn't know the answer. You're part of the Facebook group. Surely you could have shared with the community and those that were asking that it was going to be a peaceful march. In the future, that might help all of the, the rumors. This town is small. We all know everybody talks. And I feel that you could be a little bit better at producing more, uh, uh, friendliness, I guess, or you, just the thing is you had the information and you could have shared it with everybody. So everybody's mind was at ease that, you know, in fact, people were exercising their First Amendment rights and that businesses and local people didn't have to be concerned. We knew that a lot of people were coming from out of town. There's a lot of civil unrest in our nation right now. And from the statistics that I've looked up and from the talking to Chief Weebold and talking to the, the previous chief, we don't have a history of police brutality. So I was very concerned as to why we have two hundred people marching in a city for a movement that is trying to disband our local police. And I made no judgments otherwise than what the organizer put out. In the future, I will be more direct with you, sir.
Part of the problem was that there was a lot of misinformation. It was also a lot of contradictory information on Facebook, social media. It's clear that that movement, that organization was set to abolish the police department. There, there is, that's unequitable. There's, there's no argument. Because that's what it says on their Facebook. If you didn't agree with that, you weren't welcome. Plain and simple. That's where that information is coming. So regardless of what, if what you poll downtown, people downtown, I don't care about that. It's what the damn Facebooks or the memberships said. To join that committee, you had to agree to those terms. To join that organization. Black Lives Matter, who? They, they had a whole set of rules and regulations. Right? That's, that's where this, this is coming from. You know, it was you know, you can say what you want to about polling the group of people downtown. And I was down there. I, I watched that. And they were all peaceful and nothing bad happened. But the fact of the matter was that information on Facebook was pretty clear. And that's where the concern goes for the public. That's why people boarded up the I mean, that's what it was. If, if, if that's, if that's not their intent, if they're gonna be a peaceful group in Boone, Iowa, then don't post that crap with those rules and regulations that had people join under the guise that they're going to abolish or defuse the police department. It's crap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it, it didn't end up being peaceful. This is great.
Yes.
By signing off on it, you remember you sent out a warning. I'm not sure why, why. I think that this community, I've said there's no no indication of any racial issues or police brutality in this community. So I guess, while I understand and I recognize and I was the first one to say, after it happened, after the ambulance was wrong, y'all know. Jeremy's wrong. Was murdered. But don't break, you don't have a problem here, Bo. Break your problem. That's all I say. You know, we have this agreement, but you have this problem.
We absolutely have a racism problem. There are families that feel uncomfortable to be here. I have a friend who moved here with mixed children of color who felt uncomfortable to be here in Boone. Need to address the elephant in the room. And it's not an issue with this police department.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, you know, I can't, we've a lot of this, a lot of that stuff. You can't. You're gonna change something, sad thing. I don't like police department.
Change if nobody talks about it.
So I know, I think I'll disagree with you.
Issue, issue here is blatantly stated that you can't, you have to, you cannot involve any pro law enforcement. And you cannot say all lives matter as Black Lives Matter. That's how, that's how I understood it.
Specifically, it wasn't an invite just like for sale site invite, just like the Boon Community Day invite. It said Black Lives Matter. Boone. And perhaps it indicated a march or protest without a date. And I accepted it to join the group and honestly, it was three or four days and it, it was because of what was happening on the page that I went back and looked at everything. And then by then, everybody had assumed that because at that point instead of abolish police, that I had signed away my humble position to say that I would abolish police, which was never, ever, ever the case. Ever.
But for such
But my own person never called me and asked that.
But I like the perception of this, the citizens of Boone stand with communities of color here.
Yes.
First, last, and my only reason for being there. For my brothers who are black, for my nieces and nephews, for my brother-in-law who's a black law enforcement officer. They, they were hurting. They are hurting. They asked for help. They asked for support, period.
The other council comments?
Mr. Steins, your responsibility as a councilor is not to bring morality to this community. I mean, you caused an awful, not you, this movement caused an awful lot of banks for the people who boarded up their buildings. And it wasn't just Harold McKnight. And they're still boarded up. They look like they'll get out. I don't understand. You've got a constituency in the third ward. Where is the racism in third ward?
I've got children to look in the eye when I throw them in bed. If I cannot stand the communities of color here that ask me to, when they are hurting, that's wrong. I don't want to be right.
I've heard a room of white people
But the perception is reality.
Give it some kind of conversation to face right now. What are we gonna learn from each other?
We have to accept our white fragility that if a, a group of people of color that want to come and express their anger and anguish, the first, the first reaction that we have is fear.
Can I say one thing?
Marry them now.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead. I'm Todd Rasmussen. About that fear, they created the fear by putting it on their Facebook page. If you guys joined the page, you should have read the rules. Their number one rule is to abolish the police department and defund them. Now, if you are still a member, you are actually insulting our, our chief that does a great job here. You did not have to be at that protest because our police force was doing the job. They were there to maintain the promise of this protest downtown. Neither one of you needed to be there. Neither one of you needed to join this, this group. I, I was ashamed of you as, as a city council member in my ward. You let me down by joining a group that wants to abolish this police department and why? The police department is no different than anybody else out there. They do their job. They go to work. They put their lives on the line every day for you, for you and everybody in this room. And they deserve the respect that they deserve every day for putting their life on the line. So are you still a member of the Black Lives Group?
Less than kicked me out.
Then why don't you remove yourself from it? Until you remove yourself from it, you are still upholding a rule. You did not need to be down there.
I did not need to be down there.
No, you did not. So you should not have been down.
I wanted to be down there to support the community of the color in our city.
We, they are supportive. If they feel like they're not, maybe they need to get involved somewhere. I have worked in some of the worst areas in this country. I've worked through Ferguson. I've worked through these projects in Houston. The projects of Kansas City, the projects in Chicago, and I never had any problem. Cause you know why? I've treated each and every one of them with the respect that they deserved. And maybe they also need to start thinking about treating us with the respect that we deserve. We owe them nothing at all. And I don't believe, I, I feel very, very, very upset with the two that would can sit in this room and defend that group with our chief sitting on there. I would love to call and have you two step down from your seat and for roles because I do not believe that you have the city and this community at the best.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Aaron, do you have something?
Yeah. So I may, this is Aaron Canfield. I live at one twenty-five Marshall Street. I actually have four kids who are at least half Native American and they live in Boone. My kids often will pass for African-American or Mexican-American. And I too am ashamed that Elijah Steins represents my ward. Um, I don't think he's a good representative for us. And I'm embarrassed to have to say that that's my councilperson who's supposed to represent me because he doesn't represent anything that I believe in. My children, two of who, whom received their driver's licenses, three of whom now drive in this town, have had nothing but great interactions with the Boone Police Department, with the Boone Fire Department. We've had not a single issue. And my children are very dark complected. They are persons of color. They're First Nations kids. So the Black Lives Matter movement, if they want to have a parade, they want to have a march, I have no problem with that. But the fact that they want to abolish our police department, who is a, they're amazing, is, is offensive. It's insulting. And for Holly and for Elijah to sit there and say, yeah, we're members of the group. Maybe we don't entirely agree with it. Maybe we do. We don't know that because they represent us and they're sitting there in that group. So I think it's really unfortunate that Holly's an at-large councilperson and that Elijah represents me because he doesn't represent the way I believe or the way my family believes. Cause we've not had a single problem.
Thank you.
Yes, I wanted, I would like to, this is Linda Blakely. Again, I have one more comment and I'm done. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure if the council is aware, but I feel that the entire council should be aware that there are people of color that were in that group that left that group because of the message that they're sending. And I think that's important that people understand before we say we have a racism problem. Racism is everywhere in our country. Everywhere. Every single one of us is racist at some point or prejudiced at some point. It is a fact of life. However, our councilmen, every one of you, represent our city, your elected officials that represent us, the taxpaying citizens. Now, I'm new to city government, but I'm pretty certain I've got that one right. Mr. Steins and Ms. Decker, with all due respect, I know that you have your movements, you have your agendas, and I know you want change. And I don't often disagree that change needs to be done. I disagree with how you go about doing it. I don't feel that you're above board in your actions and I would appreciate in the future that you include all of us. I feel equally discriminated, Mr. Steins, that I reached out to you and because I didn't word it in a way that you would even give me more information, you didn't. And that's disappointing to me. With all due respect, I deserved more. Thank you very much for your time.
I, I just wanted to say that I think that, you know, this entire discussion, I know, and all of that whole discussion. But I want to tell you I certainly have not seen the type of issues in Boone that, that I witnessed in other cities in this state that I know pretty well. And I think this is something as a society, we all own this discussion. We all want to make it better. We want anybody to be any color. People of this community. And I have African-Americans in my family. So, you know, that's the last thing I think of myself. But when the establishment itself promotes an idea that people can have anarchy in the streets, they are against police, that they want to abolish, they want to defund it. City council in this country that has already done that, they're gonna regret it. They will regret it. I'll guarantee them. That's what is a non-starter for me. If we're gonna start bashing the police, that's where I stop. I can't go there. I will not go there. I agree with the mayor. As long as I'm sitting here, I have a tough bill. I'm not doing anything like that up here. We can work together to make us. We can work together to make us more loved and do and understand that everybody matters and who matters.
I guess I'd like to add also that the initial meeting that I had since this, would be as a chamber or a member as well. At that initial meeting, one of the directions of the group was that as our community and Black Lives are quite the minority here, now we do not have a problem here, shall we have a discussion? And through the board's direction, Kurt has put a panel together and I know that Chief Webold will be there. I believe it's next Tuesday afternoon, I don't know if that's, if I get, but starting the conversation is where my efforts will go here, not to abolish police. And if a handful of people need to hang on to that and that thing's on fire because of two remarks, I've never once said that, nothing of being a part of that group has indicated that I would do that. But my focus and my vision is to start a discussion and have a panel, just like the new move will likely be this year, that we talk about this and not just focus on such a negative, narrow part of this whole conversation that we need to have at the state level, we need to have at the national level, that we have a problem and a group of white people are not going to be able to solve that.
Any other counsel comments?